Meeting to organize state that their notice for this meeting was duly posted. There is a quorum of council present, Councilman Ellen Cat is out ill, and Councilman Smith is at a meeting, should join us later. If you'll stand, our Missouri City Police Department Honor Guard will post our colors and lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
All right, forward and march.
Please join me in saying our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I apologize for missing the last council meeting, but as you can see by this cute little sling, I was wearing a head shoulder surgery the day before that meeting, so I'm going to ask Councilman Wyatt to make this next presentation. It's easier for him to get out on the floor than it is me.
Everybody warm? Because I'm not, I'm cold natured. Commissioner Prestidge, would you please come forward? This is Commissioner Grady Prestidge, and he is our county commissioner, and he represents a sizable portion of Missouri City. Thank you for coming. I have a proclamation to read, but just kind of let me tell you, one reason why we do it, Grady does, and I'm gonna call him Grady, okay? So I don't have to keep saying Commissioner, does a lot for Missouri City. And when people do a lot for you, sometimes you need to take the time and recognize them and say thank you. We have a new road that's going in right here, which is the Extension Election, which has a new name. This section has the name of Tom Taylor Parkway, who was the first black elected county commissioner way back during Reconstruction. Reconstruction was right after the Civil War, so some young people may not know that. And Grady had a big part of it in bringing around $2.6 million of county taxpayer money. It was, it's our money, but through the commissioner, he helped get that money back to Missouri City and created another east-west outlet for this part of the city. But Grady helps us with so many different things, and so we just want to take the time to say thank you. This proclamation reads, whereas Grady Prestidge is established an impressive record of public service in Fort Bend County, which he has served the county as commissioner for more than 20 years, whereas Commissioner Prestidge has initiated the development of the Fort Bend County Community Development Department, the Fort Bend County Housing Finance Corporation, the Fort Bend Toll Road Authority, the Fort Bend County Parks and Recreation Department, he is also responsible for building two public-owned and private-operated Boys and Girls Clubs, and for making significant staff and capacity upgrades to the county health department, which is, we have a health department located right here in Missouri City, whereas Councilman Prestidge represents Fort Bend County Precinct Two, which includes portions of Houston, Missouri City, and Stafford, and whereas his performance of the duties and responsibilities as commissioner of this county has been categorized by excellent and constructive contribution to municipal government in our city. Now, therefore, I, Allen Owen, that's not me, I do have to say the mayor because his name is on here, and on behalf of the city council, and on behalf of the city council and the citizens of the city of Missouri City do hereby express our sincere appreciation and thanks to Commissioner Grady Prestidge for his service to the city of Missouri City. And we want to sincerely thank you and say a few words while we got you here. There might be somebody out there that never heard you before.
I'll be very, very brief, I know you've got a long council agenda. It's a pleasure to work with Missouri City, and one thing I realized early on is that most folks don't care whether it's federal, state, county, or city. They know they pay taxes, and they want a quick quote for the taxes they pay. So it's incumbent on us to continue to work together to try to serve our common constituencies. So with that, I want to thank you, and hopefully the next 25 years, I can earn another one of these certificates.
Nah.
As Jared will do it for me.
I promise him, I won't be here.
But thank you all so much, I appreciate it.
Grady, let me add, Don Smith, you know, had to go out, but he wanted to send his kind regards and his appreciation for all the work you've done, especially the Vicksburg Extension. That's something that is near and dear to his heart.
That's where he is right now, talking to Vicksburg.
That's where he is right now. Yeah, he appreciates it, we all appreciate that.
Very much, so, thank you.
You can stand next to me, and I'll make you look better.
All right, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Thanks, Grady.
All right, Chief, you have the next one.
I think this is, ladies, don't take this one wrong, but I have to do it with my victim.
Very good. We've got the Fort Bend Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Against Domestic Abuse, and I know we've got a lot of those ladies here, so.
All dressed in red, looking good.
Thank you all for coming.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sylvia Tiller Jackson, and I'm the very proud president of Suburban Houston Fort Bend Alumni Chapter. Just to give you a little background, Delta Sigma Theta is a national organization, we are a nonprofit, we are celebrating, this year we just celebrated 102 years of service to the community. We have over 1,000 chapters, we are both international and international, including Japan, Germany, and some other areas. We, Suburban Houston Fort Bend Alumni Chapter, is one of 1,000 chapters, right here in the Houston area, we're one of six. We have six alumni chapters in what we call the Greater Houston Area Chapter. Our membership is over about 330 women right now, and we're a baby chapter. So we've been serving in this community for about 40 years, we're getting ready to celebrate our 40th on next year, so we're real excited. And we're also really excited this year that we will play host to the National Convention for Delta Sigma Theta, which is going to mean the city of Houston is going to be visited just by a very few, just by a very small number of our membership, usually around about 20, 20 to 30,000. Members will come into Houston to take care of business, and so you will hear a lot about that in the upcoming weeks. One of the things that I wanted to talk to you just really briefly about tonight is some of the things that our chapter is doing in this community. Our service area is Missouri City and Fort Bend County. We are the only chapter that services Missouri City and Fort Bend County, we have the entire county, and as you all know, county in Fort Bend is pretty large. So, and so that keeps us fairly busy. Last time that we visited with you all, last year, we mentioned about a boots-on-the-ground type program, and we talked about partnering. Well, we have, since that visit, we have started on that partnership, and we have several layers of the partnership, but one of the things we're very, very proud about is that we have been partnering with the Crimes Victim Units, the Fort Bend Women's Center, and the, this year on March 28th, we're going to hold our first youth initiative, and we're going to bring about, less than, probably about 100 teenagers together, and we've drawn on the services and the expertise of all these different organizations, and we're bringing them together in one hub to talk about teen violence, about violence, about date violence, about bullying, how to protect your, you know, how to protect yourself, what things are out there, what's your outreach as a woman. One of our regional initiatives is violence against women, and I, if you will recall, last year I talked about, nationally, the organization has been addressing this, and we were very instrumental by going through a number of our chapters and pulling together our weight to get the reauthorization of the Violence Against Women's Act. And so we were very successful, and we have people working on the national level, and we have national initiatives to address these. We are just one of the chapters that are addressing them on the local level. We also have very many, a number of youth, not only youth programs, but we also come out from, that's just one committee, Social Action is just one of 31 committees that I oversee in the chapter. And we have committees that address scholarship and awards. We get together, we go out into these, into our high schools, and we bring together the youth, and we train them. We don't just give them a scholarship, but what about that college survival? You all, most of you remember your first, you know, that first time that you went on to college level, and so we talk to them about all of the things. We take them from an Alpha to Omega process to teach them about the college application process even. What's a good fit for you in your college? Maybe this college, maybe your major is what you think you might want to do, but let's look at how you've historically done in school, you know? So we take them from Alpha to Omega. We have committees that also address not only the social issues, not only the scholarship issues, but we also have committees that address all community issues. Last year, we were so excited, we were one of, we were the chapter in this area, and we built Habitat for Humanity. We partnered with Habitat last year, and we built our house, and we were so excited to go out there and take pictures along with the family, is a single mom with six kids. We were so excited to do that. So definitely, Suburban Houston Fort Bend Alumni Chapter is definitely on the move. We have branched out to reach out to not only Missouri City, but we've also gone and presented and talked to Sugar Land. We're moving our programs to be able to have one-on-one contact, we've engaged them to the extent that we want to be the, we want to get trained to get on the phones. How about getting on the phones and helping them answering these calls when they get domestic violence? I'm an attorney, we have, we presently have probably about 16 attorneys just in our chapter, and we're wanting to start a program where the attorneys go out, and the attorneys can now join together to give some free legal services to help fill in some of these gaps when women and some of these programs for abuse of children. I'm a family, I've been a family law attorney for about 20 years, so I've seen the media, I've been in on the mediation side, and I've seen the different impact that we can have, you know, not only on the kids, but on the parents, and trying to get everybody re-connected back into society and getting them back on better track so that they can become, so that they can connect and get their scholarships and get on and have, you know, college and everything. So as the, as a chapter that's in your service area, it's really important to us that you all stay connected with us and talk to us about things. Right now, we're so proud of the fact that we have, one of our members, Loretta Lynch, who is currently the candidate for the Attorney General of the United States. We're so excited to have her as, not only as a member, but also that's the reach that we, you know, that we have. We pull in from every level in order for us to get the things done, not only right here in our community, but across the nation. So we want you all to think of us as a, not only the boots-on-the-ground, but as someone that's in your, that's in your community, that not only cares, but someone that you can actually reach out to, and guess what? You're going to get, you're going to get a response from us, and you're also going to get us to lend our hands, sometimes forces in, forces are not always money, but sometimes forces is just that old-fashioned elbow grease, and you need, and you need us to make a contact. Well, we want you all to know that Suburban Houston Fort Bend Alumni Chapter is indeed that organization, that group of women dedicated to this community and dedicated to the causes in this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you for what you all do.
Thank you.
Yeah, very good, thank you all. I know we've got a bunch of the ladies, stand up, ladies, so we can recognize you in your red jackets back there. And thank you all for coming. Yeah, why don't you all come up here and let Cory take a picture of all the ladies?
Stand in front of the logo?
Yeah, just come stand in front of us.
Thank you.
Oh, you bet. Thank you all for what you do.
Yes, thanks.
It's awesome.
Can we squeeze over this way so we have the logo on there?
You know what, I'm a member of Alpha for Alpha, let me.
Good, glad you all are here.
Okay, well, definitely need to squeeze in a little bit more.
You guys stand up.
I'm good.
Ready? One, two, three. Let me take one more. All right, one, two, three. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you again, ladies. Okay, Bill. Glock and Glock time. Glock or Glock time. It's clock time.
I don't know if you just heard the mayor, but he said this is Glock or Clock time, and in this case, I think everybody would agree that we would not want Wes to have a Glock, so we got him a Glock. But tonight, we're here to recognize Wes Vella. Wes, if you'd join me up here.
Get his better half up here.
Yeah, oh, Terry's back there. Terry, could you come?
Terry's back there. She drove him.
Yes, I'm standing.
I had nice things to say about Wes, but I'll change that now. First of all, welcome, and we're happy that you could come tonight. Wes has been with the city for over 12 years, or almost 12 years, that is. Wes is a CPA, he's brought experience from multiple cities as a finance director, and has bettered us as a result of the experience and the expertise that he has. He's bettered our community, and he has kept a close eye on our community as far as the expenditure, the transparency of what we do with our funds, and you should be thankful and grateful for that. Some of the higher-level accomplishments that Wes has achieved during his time here is he created the, excuse me, developed the assistant director position held by Michael Higgins, and has been developing Michael over the years, and that position, along with other positions, when he got here, was a much smaller organization, and has kept the finance department at pace with the size of the organization and complexity of what we deal with day in and day out from a finance perspective. He brought forward a program and implemented outsourcing property tax billing and collection that has saved us, the taxpayers, I'm a taxpayer, and it's saved us a lot of money over the years, and has ensured that your taxes and the amount that you're charged are being done very well. Assisted with critical accounting and financial transactions and the operation of the LGC, or Local Government Corporation, which many of you may not know is the golf course, and he was critical from day one in looking at how to structure that, and then developing the operations and moving forward, from that point forward to where we are today, and making sure, again, we have transparency and that we have the tools in place to make sure that everything is done correctly. Part of the management team that identified the enterprise resource planning needs, which is our accounting system, our electronic accounting system, along with integration with other parts of the organization, we have now been able to streamline a lot of our processes, and he helped lead that. Continued to prepare and submit, and this is something that is very unique for our organization, but we have, with Wes's leadership, have received the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, and also the Reporting Excellence Award for Comprehensive Annual Report, Financial Report each year during his employment. And previous to that, he had a streak, I think we're at 30, almost 30 years, and as the mayor has every year reminded him that if we did not get it, then that was his job, his job was at stake.
And that's not why, that's not why he's leaving either, by the way.
That's correct. That's correct.
Set the record straight.
Yeah.
And then he participated in the emergency management program during ICAN Rita, and during the event, he was very critical in making sure that resources were allocated properly, accounted for properly, but what more importantly took place was afterward, when we have to deal with trying to recoup the funds that we expended through FEMA and other organizations, he was able to assist us with that, bringing back millions of dollars we expended during the disaster back into city coffers from them. And again, he brought perspective from other organizations, has benefited us greatly, and I guess the biggest thing I can say, a compliment for Wes is, always had the question asked of me, has Wes looked at this yet? And so that's the confidence people had in him with respect to the programs that we were taking a look at and making sure that he had put an eye on it. So I want to personally thank you, did a great job, Wes, and anyway, I know the organization is grateful for your service, and congratulations.
And this is for you.
Well, y'all know me as a really long-winded fella, but I don't have much to say except for what Bill just said was only because we have the fine staff that we do have in finance and the city council's support throughout the years, I appreciate that, and Bill's support, and Scott's, and all the directors. It's been fun, and I just wanted to go move on to something else in my life, and I enjoyed it tremendously. Thank you very much.
By the way, Terry is the boss of that family, anyway, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're buying lunch when I get to Manville, right?
Yeah. He's still, you know, it's funny that Wes said that he and Terry, by the way, Terry is a city manager in Richmond, Texas, and he swore up and down, and she did too, that they never talked about city business at home at night. Now, I don't believe that, but.
It's hard to do, isn't it? That's pretty hard to do.
Yeah, but that's true, isn't it? Huh?
That's right.
All right, so now you can talk about it all. Terry, thank you for letting us have him. Very good. All right, item four, public comments. This is an opportunity for anyone to address counsel on an issue that's not on the agenda. Bruce?
Well, before anybody come up, Mayor, I would like to say something, just to clarify the record. When it said, when it was shown to some via web, Facebook, and that we weren't supposed to see anything, and people come up to discuss, which is true, which I abided by, which I did, but there is another section of the agenda that I did respond to remarks that were made that allows counsel to make announcements. I just want to make that clear, so I don't want anybody coming up here to think that they're going to be challenged by anybody by incorrect information, because we appreciate people coming and letting us know what's on their mind.
Yes, sir.
Bruce Savarowski, Fond Meadow subdivision, been a resident since 1983. Last meeting where you were here, Mayor, you kind of shoved this bridge under the rug again, and wanted it go into discussion. It's been in discussion for two or three years. There are ladies here tonight that have talked with you personally about this, and you kind of ignored them also. I mean, come on now.
I haven't talked to anybody, Bruce, other than you.
You're not supposed to respond back, this is public comment here. You tried to throw me out last time with the policeman here. You know, this is ridiculous. The issue of this bridge needs to be addressed. Missouri City spends money all over on other foolish things in the city and neglects the northern part of the city. How many times has somebody come up to you folks and asked you for help? Where does it go? Nowhere. You get into meetings, you discuss it. Well, it's time to stop discussing it and do something for us over here. That bridge is dangerous, kids are going to get hurt, and you seem to don't care. Period.
Thank you. Joanne Miller.
I'm the president of the HOA, Fond Meadow, and we have not talked to you about the bridge.
You haven't, you're right.
We have been working with Councilwoman Yolanda Cord. It is a structure that was not built by the community. In actuality, it was built by Harris County. Through Councilwoman Ford, we did solicit Commissioner Elfranco Lee's office to try to assist us in to know avail. Our HOA does not have the money to replace the bridge. The thing that concerns us more than anything is like Mr. Gervaski says, the children do need, use it because it connects the two sections of Fond Meadow when they're catching the bus and that type of thing. We did pay several years ago for an engineer to come out and to do a study on the bridge. The bridge is unsafe. It has boards missing, the structure is well over 30 years old. So we are trying, whatever avenue is available, to try to assist us to possibly get the bridge fixed, because we don't want anyone to get hurt. Not only does Fond Meadow use it, but Fondren Park utilizes it, and unfortunately so does residents of the city of Houston. And we'd like for Missouri City to consider it again.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, item five, our staff reports. This is a quarterly investment report for December 31st, '14. Okay, Michael, we're gonna... Yeah, he left. He's not looking over your shoulder.
Looking over your shoulder? Seeing if he wanted to come back.
He's not looking over your shoulder.
You're a free man.
Yeah. He can watch it on MCTV.
Let me see here, this is the quarterly investment report for the period ending December All right, it's required by the city's investment policy and Public Funds Investment Act. It indicates investment balances at a point in time, as well as comparisons to prior years and quarters, demonstrates compliance with the city's investment policy, provides key information regarding trends, market comparisons, and the last point is it's not intended to be used as a revenue or expense report. In total, we have about $58 million in our portfolio, of which 16 million is in the bank, 16 million in pools, and 25 are in agency notes, so that represents 28%, 28% and 42%. Our balances comparisons from the last quarter, which was September through December, we've increased by 7.2 million. The reasons for the change, for the checking, we received property taxes in December, and so the timing of when everything comes in is pretty close to the end of the quarter. We had about $11.7 million in agency notes that either came due or they were called Our yield trends during the, for the last few years, we've been tracking. At the top, we have the agency rates, which are pretty much due between 2% and 3% for the most part. At the bottom are T-bill rates, which is the market, that's in the blue line. Just want to point out, back in March of 2013 and June of 2013, there was a decline there. We started, we bought some mortgage-backed securities that had very good rates, as time went on, they've been called or they've been maturing down. As time went on, they've been called or they've been maturing down, and we expected that. We, the trend will continue to happen. We're not buying as many of these mortgage-backed securities. They have a very high interest rate, so we're kind of buying pretty, more simpler type of investments. And if, counsel, if you can remember, about six months ago, we exceeded the WAM because of these mortgage-backed securities. They're earning very good rates, but it threw our WAM up beyond two years. So we started becoming a little more conservative on what we're buying and making sure we didn't go outside of the investment policy. Our rates at December 31st, one point nine seven six versus market of point zero three three. So we're exceeding the ninety-day T-bill by one thousand nine hundred and forty-three basis points. We got a little comment in here regards, from Logic, our pool. There, excuse me, the return of volatility was noted during quarter four as market participants reacted to a number of evolving themes. Early-quarter risk aversion briefly drove benchmark ten-year U.S. Treasury yields down to one point eight seven percent, the lowest level since the second quarter of 2013. So we're seeing trends still going down even in the market. For this first quarter, 2015, we're still watching the market, buying a little, little more, trying to get the balances down and the checking and moving it over so we earn a little better interest. But it's going to take time for us to see rates really become better. If you have any questions?
We're making a little money, don't we?
Making a little.
Better than the market.
It's still good, but not as great as it was.
Better than the market.
Better than the market. It's tough to make money when nobody paying anything. Very good. And before everybody jumps up, thanks, we've got a whole lot of money in the bank. We collect it during one or two months of the year, but we have to spend it over twelve. So all that money in that bank is going to get spent. Very good. All right, item six is a consent, is a consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda printed? Councilman Emery made the motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Wyatt made the second. All those in favor, motion carries. All right. Item seven, are public hearings, there are none. Item eight are appointments, there are none. Item nine are authorizations, item nine A. Is to consider authorizing execution of the agreement for pumping waterline improvements with the Gulf Coast Water Authority? Is there a second?
Second.
Evening, Mayor and counsel.
Is there a discussion? You got a motion. Anybody want to hear about it?
Give us a little.
Their motion? Okay.
Sure. We've been working on this for a long time, and actually, I have a little map here. What we have is that, get this down just a little, is located south of our surface water, our regional water treatment plant that we have, we have about sixty acres of land that will be developing into a water storage reservoir for raw water. What our long-term vision was is that we would build our own pump station off of the Brazos River. However, in discussions with Gulf Coast Water Authority, we found a better deal in that basically partnering with them to put a pump in the river that would allow for low flow times to be able to pump our quantity out and direct it directly to our reservoirs or directly to our surface water plant and not have to rely on our connection with the canal. So when the canal goes down for maintenance or they decide to shut it down, we can still get water. So this is an agreement to partner with them. Part of that is part of the next agenda item. But working on financially being partners on this and splitting those designs and construction costs on a pro-rata share.
And that pump is a second item that's on the agenda.
That would be the design portion that's correct, sir.
Any other discussion? Not, we'll vote all those in favor. Motion carries. Then item nine B is consider authorizing the execution of a contract for the designing of the pump and the waterline improvements with the Gulf Coast Water Authority. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
You made a motion.
You made the motion.
Okay, well, I didn't, can't second it. No, you can't do both. I know.
There's a second.
I didn't know who you picked up.
Yeah, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, motion carries. Very good. Thank you.
I'm still, I'm still here, sir.
Item nine C is consider authorizing execution of the agreement between the city, Missouri City, and FLC Parkway LP for the funding of utility research.
Move to that.
Okay. Is there a second? Yolanda?
Second.
All right, is there a discussion?
She's on that committee.
Well, I know. That's why I wanted her to second it. Any discussion? Just explain a little bit what it is.
Sure. This is a continuation. As we recall, several meetings ago, counsel allowed us to move forward with the Serna's track that was located just kind of northwest of this property. This is the Rocky Live property, therefore, the development. And they're coming forward with the same terms that they would like to help fund our research to be able to find the financial mechanism necessary for utility infrastructure in the Mustang Bayou service area. So this is the acceptance of that, to be able to help share that funding. So they have already graciously given us a deposit to help pay for our counsel fees. And so this is that same agreement that we did.
That's what Tom's here for. Right, Tom? It's good to see him out, huh?
He's got the checkbook.
Yeah, he's got the checkbook, right? Rocky gave him the checkbook.
That's right.
You wish. You wish. All right, there was a motion by Councilman Wyatt and a second by Councilwoman Ford. Any other discussion? Not, we'll vote all those in favor. Motion carries. Thank you. That tell Rocky thank you, too. All right, item nine D is consider authorizing staff to develop a resolution in support of legislation creating Missouri City's Management District Number One and Missouri City Management District Number Two for city council's consideration at the city council's March 2nd, 15 regular meeting.
So moved.
Is that part of this? No, okay. One-handed. Is there, let's see, we have motions. Is there a second? Chris?
Someone else, is someone seconding?
No, I need, I need a second.
Why'd you call my name?
I just wanted to get you to second something.
Well, we have a couple of people up here. I know I have to second.
All right. All right, there's been a motion and a second. There's any discussion?
This, this topic here, Mayor and counsel, is just a authorization for us to continue to head towards developing a resolution of support for the legislative process to create the management district associated with Serna's track and also with Rocky Live's track. We met with the Planning, Development, and Infrastructure Committee, and they went ahead and agreed with us to move this forward. So our plan is to come before you next council meeting, March 2nd, with that resolution of support for the legislative process, and then get that forward before the legislature, get those approved. And then we have a funding mechanism available for our utility infrastructure design. The benefit to this is that part of that will be tied to the development agreement. Part of that also is that the city will remain in ownership of our water and wastewater infrastructure. And so that way, we can continue to develop our Mustang Bayou service area.
Very good. Any other discussion? Not, there was a motion by Councilman Wyatt, second by Councilman Emery. All those in favor, motion carries. Item nine E is consider authorizing execution of the addendum to the Regional Wastewater Treatment Facilities Agreement between the city of Missouri City, First Colony Municipal Utility District Number Nine and Fort Bend County Municipal Utility District Number Forty-two. This also out of yours, Yolanda? That's out of your committee?
So moved.
Councilwoman Ford made the motion. Who made the second? Councilman Wyatt? Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, was that with Mud Nine and Forty-two?
Yeah.
Is that correct? I apologize. I thought we had moved that down to items eleven. So with that, what is, is that, this is the steep bank, flat bank agreement that has been ongoing for a number of years. We finally reached the end.
Mayor, I believe you might cover previous agenda.
We do. We need to, we need a motion to suspend the rules, don't we?
So moved.
Okay. And a second? Councilman Emery?
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll step back.
Then we, no, then we can move to eleven.
May we haven't done agenda items, nine E?
Nine E.
I think that's what we're on.
Well, I thought that's what we're on.
Well, what he read was eleven. And so if we're going to go to eleven, we need to suspend the rules. We can always go back to nine E.
Okay, so the motion was, okay, the motion, there was a motion from Councilwoman Ford and a second by Councilman Jerry Wyatt for, to approve eleven A?
No.
Eleven E.
I didn't know he was reading eleven E. I call for nine E, and that's the motion. Are you saying we need to take eleven E before nine E?
No.
Okay. Then we have a motion and a second on nine E.
Okay.
All those in favor?
No, we don't.
Well, we do. Yes, that's, yes, we do.
Do you need a motion on?
I'm confused here.
We need a motion on nine, and a second on nine E, and that's consider authorizing the execution of the contract for the design of water transmission main to serve the toll GTIAS property owner LLC property pursuant to the Sienna Plantation Joint Development Agreement.
What you read was about forty-six in Mud Nine. Or forty-two in Mud Nine, whichever one.
I read it off the agenda. Did you change the agenda on it again?
You probably have the prelim version.
Well, that's okay. Well, it's okay. It happens.
Now, you know, guys, when we changed the agenda that was sent out, we need to know that. As I read, what I have is the agenda, which is nine E, which was what I read and what Councilwoman Ford made the motion to approve, and you made the second. Yeah, see. So now we didn't even have an F and a G.
If it doesn't have the signature, then it's not the final one.
Huh?
If it doesn't have the signature, I'm a signature-based, it's not the final.
Okay.
Okay, so direct us.
Yeah, so are we back to nine E? What is eleven E that was handed out?
That is two, not, eleven E and eleven F are two resolutions concerning steep bank, flat bank. And staff will respectfully request after the conclusion of nine E that counsel consider suspending the rules to take those.
All right.
Okay, I know we need to suspend the rules and go there.
All right, so nine E is to consider authorizing execution of a contract for the design of water transmission main to serve the toll GTIAS property owner LLC property pursuant to the Sienna Plantation Joint Development Agreement. All right?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Mayor and counsel, this is a proposal for design services with Endo Prick Hibs and Todd, who's been doing our design work for our regional water treatment plant and all its transmission mains. This is partly to serve the Sienna South project, as we call it, but also the toll GTIAS down there in the new development. And part of that development agreement requires that at a certain point in time, when the developer calls for it, we have twenty-four months to install a water line when they reach approximately eight hundred homes. They are projecting that development to happen. So therefore, they have, their attorney has made that call to say that we would like to have that water line start the design and then move towards construction to meet that, that timeline. So we have worked that out. I've met with the Long Range Committee, I apologize, that's what it used to be called, met with the Committee, the Long Range Planning Committee on November 17th of 2014 to be able to engage the services of EHT, negotiate a contract. And then that has been ongoing till today, so therefore, we have come forward with that contract to provide design services, construction management services, and the on-call services associated with construction. And so that's what we're doing forward right now before you.
And it'll be paid for how?
It's paid out of our GRP, so it's by user fees. Associated with that does not affect the general fund.
It's important for us to say that, you know.
This is the location here, and I'll give you a brief update.
The mouse is over here.
Is mouse over here? Thank you. Located right up here where the mouse is pointed is our regional water treatment plant in the upper left-hand corner. And we have already extended a transmission main down along the railroad tracks as the mouse goes to the Sienna Water Plant Number One. From that standpoint, that is where the line terminates. We will pick up from there, continue south down the railroad tracks. We're looking at the easement associated in the HLMP or the center point alignment, and heading down that easement all the way down behind the high school to the wastewater plant that's there, that's temporary. Come along and then hit Waters Boulevard and continue that south to the projected location of the water plant for serving the Sienna South area. So it's about two and a half to three miles of pipeline. And this will be a thirty-inch transmission main to be able to supply and service that area.
And what's the capacity of that plant?
Of our plant, of our surface water plant right now is ten million gallons per day. We are, in the wintertime, running approximately two point five million gallons per day. And our peak, we hit last year at six point one.
Very good.
We got plenty of water to sell.
Yeah. All right, there was a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. You got it, Maria?
Yes.
And I have a motion by Councilman Wyatt and a second by Councilman Emery to suspend the rules and take up eleven E.
And eleven F.
And eleven F, yeah. Eleven E.
Eleven E, a resolution of the city council of the city of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the mayor to execute and the city secretary to attest an addendum to the Regional Wastewater Treatment Facilities Agreement between the city of Missouri City, Texas, First Colony Municipal Utility District Number Nine and Fort Bend County Municipal Utility District Number Forty-two.
Is there a motion out of your, is that out of your committee?
So, so moved.
Jerry's in the committee also here.
Motion, and is there a second?
Second.
Mayor and counsel. Yes, sir. Excuse me, Mayor and counsel, this is a, exciting time is that this process has been ongoing for a number of years. When we did the expansion to the steep bank, flat bank wastewater plant in 2010, we've been working towards finalizing some agreements to get the costs distributed correctly among all the participants and working towards that, both with what we call Phase One participants, which is this agreement, which is MUDS Nine and Forty-two, to pay for those regulatory upgrades, get those balanced around. But then one of the things that have come up during the discussion was if there was extra capacity, how could we be able to relinquish that or sell that capacity to a future participant? And so we came up with a way to be able to broker that. The city will be the broker of that. And we allow that to transpire so that maybe at our next time, our next customer, which is projected to be Sienna Plantation One, maybe we don't have to expand the plant as large, and we can use some of the stranded capacity and allow the MUDS to recoup some of those costs that they put in. So that's what this agreement is for MUDS Nine and Forty-two.
Okay. So is there a motion on this resolution?
Have you got a motion and a second?
There was a motion and a second.
Oh, we got a motion after we had Councilman Wyatt.
It's a very environmental-friendly approach as well, well.
Yes, yes. So we don't have to go ahead and just continue to expand, just to expand. We can look to use the full capacity of the plant.
Very good. Any other discussion? All those in favor, motion carries. All right, eleven F.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the mayor to execute and the city secretary to attest addenda to the Regional Wastewater Treatment Facilities Agreements between the city of Missouri City, Texas, and Fort Bend County Municipal Utility Districts Number Forty-six, One Fifteen, One Twenty-nine, and One Forty-nine respectively.
Move to that.
Okay, there are motions. There are second?
Mayor and counsel, this is similar to the last agreement that we just talked about, nine forty-two. But this is to the Phase Two participants, when we expanded from one point five million gallons to three million gallons per day. We also had reserved a certain amount of capacity, but also held them on the obligations for future phase expansion. As development has happened in the Riverstone area and the Mud Forty-six area, they've come to realize that they, we had over-requested the amount of capacity that was needed. And so therefore, one of the tasks of this agreement is to be able to reallocate down to one point five million gallons of capacity so that these Phase Two participants are not required then to participate in any future expansion as necessary, only regulatory upgrades as called for by TCQ. This also has the same stipulation of any unused capacity that they would like to relinquish. As a future participant comes forward, they'll be able to have that opportunity to sell that capacity, and the city would be the broker of that deal.
Very good.
Pretty fair.
Any other questions? You motion?
There was a motion and a second.
Uh-huh. Yeah, Councilman Wyatt made the motion. Councilman Emery made the second. All those in favor, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Mayor and counsel, thank you very much.
All right. Item ten are ordinances. Item ten A.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, providing for a general election to be held on May nine, 2015, for the purpose of electing single-member district council members for districts A, B, C, and D, providing for a joint election on May nine, 2015. An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, providing for a general election to be held on May nine, two thousand and fifteen, for the purpose of electing single-member district council members for districts A, B, C, and D, providing for a joint election on May nine, two thousand and fifteen, with other entities contracting with Fort Bend County for this joint election, providing for election precincts and polling places, providing for appeal, providing for severalability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
And this is a single-reading item. You have to read the Spanish one?
I do not.
How about Maria?
I can try.
There is no requirement to read it? Just have it in writing?
Just in writing, ma'am.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I would like to see these four people have an election, so I'm gonna make the motion. And maybe my at-large colleague will second it, so they won't have to do that. You want them back, don't you?
I'm gonna let them second it.
Are you gonna let Councilwoman Ford second it?
Second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Ten B.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending chapter fourteen, buildings and building regulations of the Missouri City Code, adopting the two thousand and fifteen edition of the International Building Code and making amendments thereto, providing an effective date, providing for appeal, providing a penalty, and providing for severalability.
By the way, the attorney has, has told me that she's gonna be very brief on every single one of these. If you've got something to say on one of them, it better be brief, too.
Well, I mean, we need to point out is that, that a lot of this is we are adopting codes that actually, in many cases, have been written by other authorities.
That's right.
And.
Most of these are just building codes and fire codes and codes that have been updated for the two, two thousand and fifteen, and I asked the attorney early on if we couldn't just take them all, and she said no. The, 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 our charter says you gotta read them all, so be brief on each one of what they do.
If you have questions, we have the building official and deputy building official here who can answer any questions.
I know you do. I had them, I saw them. Anyway, are there any major changes that we, that are important?
We, we covered it in our work session the other night. Significant, the significant changes are in the fire code. The building code has the changes that are being pursued in the fire code so that they're consistent with one another. Otherwise, pretty nominal changes, big changes. The existing building code and the swimming pool code used to exist, and they had the parts buried throughout all the different codes. Now they pulled them out and made separate codes for them. But other than that, it's pretty much what people expect and what they've been doing.
Gary, I know that in the past, and I don't know how, I don't know how often you all have done it or if you've done it lately, we invited our vendors, our, all of our roofers, plumbers, electricians, we invited those people in for a meeting with the, with our code people to talk about this. Have we had that meeting lately?
Yes, we have.
Good.
We had, I wanna say twenty to thirty, um, thirty people come in, and they were, they were the field workers who came in.
Right. Well, I think it's important that you have them come in so that they're not out there in the field making mistakes and then going, I didn't know that.
And, and the.
They don't come, that's your problem, but if we have it and they come, at least they know it.
If I'm not mistaken, the effective date on each of these will be July one, so we have even more time to do more education with them and help them understand, although in many cases, they may already be designing to the two thousand and fifteen code, two thousand and fourteen electrical code, 'cause Center Point has already gone to that code. And they really lead the field.
Well, I remember years ago, we had a lengthy discussion over the grounding rod. And how long it needed to be and how deep it needed to be, right? And the gutter flashing, okay. Those were the two items that we had long discussions over, those meetings.
Let the city attorney read these captions, because there's a lot of.
To clarify, zero vote on ten B.
Huh?
I need the vote on ten B.
Did you read it?
On each one?
Yeah, we're gonna have to vote on each one.
Okay.
So you read ten B.
I did.
So I need a motion to approve ten B.
Go move. Second.
Councilman Emery made the motion, Councilman Wyatt made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Ten C.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending chapter fourteen, building and building regulations of the Missouri City Code, adopting the two thousand and fifteen edition of the International Plumbing Code and making amendments thereto, providing an effective date, providing for appeal, providing a penalty, and providing for severalability.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second and second. All those in favor? Ten D.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending chapter fourteen, building and building regulations of the Missouri City Code by adopting the two thousand and fifteen edition of the International Fuel Gas Code and making amendments thereto, providing an effective date, providing for appeal, providing a penalty, and providing for severalability.
Does this deal with the storage of? The storage of fuel? What does this deal with? The fuel gas code? Is it, does it deal with the storage of gas?
The fuel gas code is for like your gas system, your household, it's for your household gas service.
Right.
And any appliances, air conditioning, heating.
Okay.
Ventilation systems, hot water heaters, and that'll talk about it on the fuel gas.
I got you. Okay.
Some move. It's a crazy name for it, but.
I know. That's where you have to get a permit to put in, put in a hot water heater, right?
Yes.
That's what I thought. Is there a second?
Second.
I hear you, Mr. Emery. All right, all those in favor? Motion carries. E, ten E.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending chapter fourteen, building and building regulations of the Missouri City Code by adopting the two thousand and fifteen edition of the International Mechanical Code and making amendments thereto, providing an effective date, providing for appeal, providing a penalty, and providing for severalability.
Go move. Second.
All those in favor? F.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending chapter fourteen, building and building regulations of the Missouri City Code, amending regulations pertaining to the provision of electrical services, adopting the two thousand and fourteen edition of the National Electrical Code and making amendments thereto, providing an effective date, providing for appeal, providing a penalty, and providing for severalability.
And Gary, if there are any major changes on any of these, you know, let us know, but I think there, most of them are just a revamp of the same thing.
They're basically the same thing. It primarily incorporates new techniques, new materials, new procedures to bring them up to date. You'll see a change in the Energy Conservation Code, which simply makes energy savings more effective in the construction.
They cover the elimination of aluminum wire.
Well, that's nine years ago.
Oh, I don't even wanna, I don't wanna touch that one. I think we have a special.
Well, I, I would assume that it still does.
We will not be changing the electrical code in relation to the aluminum wiring. It's gonna stay the same. And the electrical board met, discussed the electrical code changes in it, and felt that what we currently have as far as amendments is what we need to stay with.
And that's the pig tails that go on the aluminum wire?
As far as the aluminum wiring sizing.
Right.
And the connections for the aluminum wiring. It's gonna remain as it has been in the past.
But we're not building any new buildings with aluminum wiring.
No, we're not.
Yeah, that's the important part.
Yeah.
I mean, we have to deal with what's on the ground, but we're not letting anything in new.
Correct.
Was changed years ago.
Yes.
But you've got some houses and things that may be under reconstruction or something that had aluminum wire that you have to go in and re-inspect, and if they have aluminum wiring, we're requiring, I assume, the pig tails, some of the, and the.
There's certain types of connections that you can use if it's an existing construction, but if they're changing a section, they can't intermix the wiring, they have to take that wiring back to the original source and make it all updated. We're not making them go back and change the entire house, but just any areas that they're modifying.
Okay. Very good. All right, there was a motion by Councilman Emery and a second by Councilman Wyatt. All those in favor? G.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending chapter fourteen, building and building regulations of the Missouri City Code by adopting the two thousand and fifteen International Swimming Pool and Spa Code and making amendments thereto, providing an effective date, providing for appeal, providing a penalty, and providing for severalability.
Worth noting on, on the swimming pool and spa code, it did not exist in the past, but all the provisions were scattered in other codes. They pulled them out of the other codes, made a simple one-place-to-look code, so it benefits the, the people building the swimming pools and the regulators of the swimming pools. They know where to look. All the safety and required federal requirements are in place in this code.
All right, let me ask you something on, on new pool construction. I know a lot of people are converting to saltwater pools to avoid having to put dechlorinators on their existing chlorine pools. On the new chlorine pools, are those dechlorinators being required to put on to backflush into the storm sewer?
It is not being required to put in. We prohibit them washing back into the sewer systems. They have to use a special type of filtering system, the tank type, instead of the ones that you have to backwash.
So the, the, huh, really? So they, they're now requiring the filter system rather than the detonatious earth? Is that right? The DE filters are not gonna be allowed anymore?
They cannot dispose of those directly into the sewer system or storm drain line.
I mean, where, where are people, I mean, if you've got a DE filter today, where are they gonna dump it? If they don't dump it into the storm system or into the sewer system, they have to dump, they have to backwash it somewhere.
They, you know, that, that isn't.
That's what the white stuff is we see in the gutters along the streets.
Right. The, the Stormwater Pollution Protection Program is the, what's governing the chlor, dump, the dumping of chlorine into the storm sewer system.
Right.
Of course, ninety-nine percent of wastewater treatment plants won't take the chlorinated water from a swimming pool because of its adverse impact on the, the wastewater treatment plant operation, so that it's normally into the storm sewer system out there. The Stormwater Pollution Protection Program does not mandate any specific method on how to get rid of the chlorine. You can have a dechlorination system. You can let, not put chlorine for seven days and let it naturally react and dissolve and go away on that as well.
And algae starts growing, yeah.
On that. So there are multiple ways that it can be achieved, but the building code doesn't necessarily address that. There is something between, a disconnect between the Stormwater Pollution Protection Rules that's promulgated by the EPA and the building code requirements on that.
So what about the DE? Where are they gonna, where are they gonna dump DE?
The new pools that they're putting in, they're not using that system.
At all.
At all. So they're using a different type of system that eliminates that problem. At the point, at this point, most pool companies are pumping any water out that would be a contaminant, taking it and hauling it off individually, or they're going through a process of dechlorinating the pools. There are several different ways of doing it that are available. They just need to pick out the one they wish to do.
Move to that.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Item H. Oh, all those in favor? Item H.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending chapter fourteen, building and building regulations of the Missouri City Code by adopting the two thousand and fifteen edition of the International Energy Conservation Code and making amendments thereto, providing an effective date, providing for appeal, providing a penalty, and providing for severalability.
Their motion.
This code strengthens the energy efficiency in homes and buildings that are being built.
Did we get a second?
You.
Yeah, I second it.
Very good.
And increased the insulation required to believe in the walls, or was it in the ceiling?
Only the ceiling is where it's gonna increase it. Most of your homes that are being built nowadays wanna get the star rating. In order to get that star rating, they're already putting that insulation in there.
Yeah.
It's not going to affect the new construction that we're currently doing.
And it affects light bulbs.
Really?
Well, I understand.
The replacement of incandescent light bulbs.
As, as I recall, there's a high percentage of bulbs that must meet an efficiency rating, and incandescent bulbs will not do that.
Yeah.
And, and some of this is because some of those changes are being made on the retail side anyway. I mean, insulation, in my house, you can't buy it anymore, not at that rating.
Well, it's getting harder and harder to find incandescent light bulbs, too.
It is.
There is a certain time period that incandescent light bulbs will not be produced anymore. It'll be illegal throughout the United States to even sell them or have them on the market, so it'll self-weed itself out.
Yeah, I know. Be like chlor, be like chlorane. People will be buying them in cases and hoarding it. I remember when they did that with chlorane, that I had gallons of it. That kills termites. All right, there was a motion and a second. All those in favor? All right.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending chapter fourteen, building and building regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Missouri City, Texas, adopting the two thousand and fifteen edition of the International Residential Code and making amendments thereto, providing an effective date, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, and providing for severalability.
No significant changes.
Okay. Their motion. Second. All those in favor? Motion carries. J.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending chapter fourteen, building and building regulations of the Missouri City Code, adopting the two thousand and fifteen edition of the International Property Maintenance Code and making amendments thereto, providing an effective date, providing for appeal, providing a penalty, and providing for severalability.
No significant changes.
Changes? A motion? Mr. Emery?
Nope.
Huh?
Nope.
You didn't make a motion?
Nope.
Do we have a motion?
Move to that.
Is there a second? Yes, we have to move, I mean, these are, these are two reading ordinances. We have to have a motion and a second, or they fail. So we can sit here and ignore it, or we can do what needs to be done. Okay.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri, sorry.
All those in favor? Yeah, motion passes. Okay.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending chapter fourteen, building and building regulations of the Missouri City Code by adopting the two thousand and fifteen edition of the International Existing Building Code and making amendments thereto, providing an effective date, providing for appeal, providing a penalty, and providing for severalability.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
And a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Uh-oh. Here it comes.
What time is it? You don't have to do this, you gotta flex the jaws. You've done, you've done all your work, so you don't worry about it.
Is there a motion?
Move to that.
We can fix that, big boy. Is there a second?
He took his coat off. Come on, give him a chance.
Is there a second? Mr. Emery?
Second.
Yeah. All right. All those in favor? Motion carries. All right, eleven of resolutions, eleven A.
Eleven A is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the mayor to execute and the city secretary to attest an economic development agreement between the City of Missouri City, Texas, and TC Houston Industrial Development Inc. pertaining to certain improvements to an approximately one-one-nine-point-eight-seven acre tract of land located in the City of Missouri City, Texas.
Didn't we pull that item?
Well, staff would request that it be, that council postpone this to a future time.
Very good. Eleven B.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, supporting the relocation of the Houston Community College System campus located within the City of Missouri City, Texas, from Sienna Springs Boulevard to Texas Parkway and containing other provisions related thereto.
Good evening, good evening, mayor, members of council. As we've talked many times, Texas Parkway is a key area of our community. The attraction of capital investment, the development, and in fact, in some cases, the redevelopment of Texas Parkway has been a longstanding goal of the city. For some months now, we have been working with Houston Community College and Fort Bend County on the opportunity to relocate the Sienna campus to Texas Parkway. Tonight you have before a resolution, before you, a resolution which is in support of that objective, because we believe that the relocation of that campus to next to City Hall would be a significant capital investment, would bring students to this area, would revitalize and show some great opportunities for this area. The process is still rather lengthy. There's a lot of steps to go through. We're working with the county. The county has already passed a similar intent to work with HCC. HCC is working to put the property next to the City Hall under contract. We have been identified, or we, working with HCC, have identified that there is a funding gap that we would like to support, going to a foundation to attract some additional capital for this project. There are essentially four purposes to tonight's agenda. Item one, it states clearly that the city supports the relocation of the Sienna's campus to Texas Parkway. That will demonstrate that we'll be working with all parties to facilitate that to occur. As a part of that, that there are necessary changes. to facilitate that to occur. As a part of that, that there are necessary changes to the Sienna tours and the participation age agreements with HCC, with Fort Bend County, to utilize the funds which have presently been budgeted for about six-point-nine million dollars in increment over the lifespan of the tours that could be utilized by the county to purchase the existing building for the uses of county annex. It also states that there's a desire to attract foundational support for, to fill any funding gap. And then lastly, it articulates that in the event that there is a gap beyond what we can attract from the foundation, that this council would consider, it is not a commitment, there's nothing in here that commits the city in this action to providing any funding, but that we might consider an application up to a maximum of four hundred thousand dollars to make this project facilitate. That could be in kind, through drainage, it could be a number of things that we might do. The opportunity here is, and what we've talked about previously, if we can have a twenty-five, thirty million dollar capital investment next to City Hall on Texas Parkway and see the students here, there may be some measure of funds that we might be able to come up to, to, to make that happen. So far, the Board of HCC has already taken action to authorize its staff to work, put the things under contract, and under certain assurances that the staff brings forward and as well as support from the county and the city, they will take actions to close on that property and move this forward. What this means for the city is the existing building would relocate, and probably they would make one building rather than two. The new building that was planned for the existing campus would then be combined with that. They're working with the drainage and the city and blue, blue ridge mud to access utilities. Staff has been working with them on an engineering standpoint to make sure that we've addressed all of those aspects. This is an exciting time for the city, and I think it's one of the best opportunities we have to see this level of capital investment on Texas Parkway. Be happy to answer any questions that you have and would encourage, would recommend that you approve the resolution.
I have a couple of questions. So the section five, where it mentions the four hundred thousand dollars in incentives, you said that we still don't know what the city's participation would be.
We don't know if there's any city participation. Right now, it's possible, we plan some worst case if all these things didn't happen and some prices. So we handicap that to say it could be as much as. But right now, this does not commit any city resources at this point, but says we anticipate that there could be a, a, some level of support that may be needed. The foundations sometimes want to see, even though, let me slow down. Even though the city participates in a tours, and it's a long-winded answer to your question, I apologize, and would be providing its participation increment to assist in the purchase of the building, some foundations may also want to see some support, some level of support from the county and the city in cash or in kind in addition to that. So anticipates those things might be necessary.
And if we did have to give any funding in cash, where would that come from?
We haven't identified that yet because we haven't identified that there is a need to, but we have, we would bring that back to you as a part of this effort at such time prior to considering the request. Right now, it's our hope that the significant capital investment that we have made in the tours and the funds that we would provide there would be sufficient and none would be needed.
Okay. Has HCC provided us with any type of, I guess, market study to show the viability or sustainability of the campus at that location? And I guess my concern is, is that I think it can potentially be a very good project. It's just more of a concern that it's moved from Cartwright to Sienna, now back over here. And even, you know, if you look at the Stafford campus, I went there seventeen years ago. It never caused any type of economic development to happen along Murphy Road or anything. So I guess what I'm looking for is, you know, the numbers to kind of say, when we go out and we're selling this to the community, that we've kind of done our due diligence on this.
Well, just, just then, and I'll ask the mayor to address this. The Cartwright location is a big misnomer. So we need to, we inform everybody of that. That was never intended to be a real college there. It provided some service, and the mayor was the one that worked to help get them. So just address that because I've seen this in other places.
And I've had those questions asked of him.
Yeah, and it is, you know, back when we got into ACC, we had an opportunity because-
Before we got into ACC.
But I mean, we had an opportunity to either get into ACC or Horton because Fondren Park was in ACC's zone. We were able to do that because we were in Horton, we were, we could get into Horton's, you know, district. Well, at that time, Horton's tax rate was about seventeen cents and ACC's was seven. So it wasn't a real hard choice for me to go to Austin and ask the supervisor and council and tell them that we wanted to be in ACC, which we did. We had a committee, which bless his heart, Ron Lee worked his butt off for a long time, going out and convincing the citizens of Missouri City to take on a seven-cent tax increase for a college.
It was six at the time.
Or six, I guess, at the time. And, you know, we had a lot of seniors in the, in the community that said, why do I want to take on any more taxes than what I already have? I'm already past college age. But I think that committee did a tremendous job in selling the entire community on the importance of having, quote, "a college" within the City of Missouri City. Well, they looked at what today is the Fort Bend AISD's Progressive High School, where the old Walmart was. They were actually looking at that in the beginning. Didn't work out. Fort Bend bought it. So the citizens said, we gotta see some presence. We're paying a tax, and we're not seeing any presence in Missouri City. We want to see something. So they rented the space in that shopping center along Cartwright Road. And it really was a technical thing. A lot of the seniors went there to learn computer skills, and it really, that's about what it was. It was a computer skills class and technical class. But we kept saying, look, guys, we're paying a lot of money, and we're not seeing any campus. And when we, and when we approved this tax increase and when we approved to come into ACC, you all committed to us that you were going to build a campus, and we got to see more than what's in that little space down there. Well, then with the gracious working relationship with Johnson and some others, they worked out a deal where Johnson and that county building their library, worked out a deal with Johnson Development to put the campus where it is today. Now, if you look at what the plans were for that campus, it was to be more of an open campus with multiple buildings, like you would see on a college campus today, rather than a single building like you see at Stafford. Well, unfortunately, the reality has set in in that, I guess, that the people who live in Sienna, which we thought would be attracted to that campus, send their kids to a four-year college. They're not going to a two-year campus like ACC originally thought. Their numbers are struggling. And as I told two of the board members, I don't want to see that campus shut down, which they do now during the summertime because they've got the lack of participation as it is. I would rather see you move it to where the users are, and let's make this deal work. I said, we, I think still, you owe us that commitment that you made when we started paying taxes for a campus, regardless of how close Stafford is to this campus. And I, and I visited with two of the board members this past week about the fact that I've been pushing for that to be a medical technology campus, period. We had Hightower High School sitting down there with a magnet school for, for medical technicals. I had Nita Sani go to the CEOs of the major hospitals in this area to find out that there is a tremendous shortage for nurses. They're hiring them from Vietnam and the Philippines and Mexico and everywhere else because we can't, we can't train them fast enough. We have a great opportunity here, Joe, and I told them, and they were going, I didn't even know about this. When did this come up? I said, we've been talking about this for three years. You're missing the bullet. Stafford is a technical campus. We can make this campus something that kids in this town can go to and learn a profession if they would just focus their direction towards trying to do what I've been trying to get them to do for a long time. It's a great move. I don't think that a lot of the board members are as knowledgeable after talking to them this past week, and I sent them your recap. That hadn't been discussed with them during the board. And, and I apologize that the board didn't talk to them like we've been talking right here. They're kind of out there going, how's this work? What's this gonna happen? How are we gonna get this money? How are we gonna get this money? So I think, and Don has worked very hard on it. I'm glad to see Don come in. Don's worked very hard on this because he's our representative on that committee. We gotta move forward with it. They're gonna move forward with it. We just got to figure out, Yolanda, where the pieces fit. And I'm like, Joe, we can do it in kind, but we, we're gonna end up with a project next door to us that we've long time talked about, hopefully a town center-type concept around that college with the, with the library there. This could be the thing that we've been talking about and not been able to do anything for years and years and not cost us anything.
Well, it could certainly be a catalyst, but, you know, the, the four hundred thousand dollars doesn't bother me. That's, that's a drop in the bucket. And in fact, it's, it's being built within the tours anyway. I can figure out how to get four hundred thousand dollars if we had to come up with cash inside of a tours. And that money's not generated by tax bills anyway.
No, this question was a good question.
It's generated by, it's generated by-
Yeah, her question was a good question.
Because it is in District A, you know, one of my concerns is making sure we've done our due diligence because, you know, that's one of the things when I'm going to meetings that, you know, they're like, oh, it's gonna, it's gonna drive this and it's gonna drive that. And I'm like, hold up. I can't promise you that that school is going to bring X, Y, Z. I mean, you know, you can look, like I said, you look at Stafford's campus. I mean, I went there seventeen years ago. It's still the same Wendy's there, and they can't keep the deli open. So I think it can potentially be a good project. I just think that we need to make sure we do our due diligence as we're selling this to the community. Because the last thing I want is, you know, I, I hope I'm here in twenty years, but the last thing I want that, you know, people are saying to me, well, we built that college, but, you know, it's just now it's just an empty building or something. So I just want to make sure we've done our part. That I know development can go any kind of way, but I just want to make sure that the council done, has done their part as we're voting for these things to make sure that, you know, we've crossed our Ts and dotted our Is.
Well, and, but the other thing, too, is what gives us buy-in with them is by supporting it. Because when people ask me, I tell people, they can do what they want to do. We really can't regulate them because they're another government agency. But here's our chance to be able to cooperate with them, you know, in, in, and, and that's the only way we have influence with them.
So, Joe, they haven't provided any type of market study or anything to us?
Ms. Ford, as you'll recall from our numerous conversations over the months on, on this project, we have relied upon them to make their own business decisions. Our assessment has been based on what we believe it, it can do for us. One of the things we looked at is Texas Parkway has struggled to, to attract the significant capital investment that this project would bring next to City Hall. The owners of the property next to us have struggled for buyers. How many projects have fallen through, and we've had fallow land next to us that's just not gone anywhere? So part of the benefit for, that we saw, and you're, you're absolutely correct, it's difficult to quantify whether it's HCC and Stafford or U of H on fifty-nine, the exact benefit. But what we do know is if you have hundreds or a thousand or more students next to City Hall, and you have several million dollars or tens of millions of dollars of capital investment next to City Hall that hasn't been able to be attracted in the last twenty years, that is a positive thing. If we ask ourselves which type of business we'd like to see here, and would we like to see twenty to thirty million dollars, and we don't know the impact, that's been the confines of our decision in whether or not our invest, our investment would, would reap those types of rewards.
And, and that's what I'm concerned about. I know they can move forward with or without us. I mean, you know-
I don't think they'll move forward without us, without our support, because they're also looking to make sure that they have a community partner as they are with the county, and they need us in, in to, to make changes to the tours to facilitate this. But, but we have gone down, as you'll recall, we've looked at charter schools. We've looked at entertainment facilities. We looked at a number of things to create an activity center and, and help create an investment revitalization on Texas Parkway. And the challenges that we faced have been, have been many. So this is one of the items where we have an existing college that has identified that its student base is more proximate to this location than it is to that location. That they had greater success when they were in temporary facilities over here than they did where they're at presently. That they're the best determinant of whether or not it's a business case for them, and we see these, the confines of our decision is, is based around our, our investment and how we can help facilitate that.
And I also hope that the location, there are more people living in the Texas Parkway corridor than in the whole city of Stafford. And hopefully that would-
That's right.
Be, whereas you look at the Stafford School, most of those people are coming from elsewhere to Stafford because the Stafford population is not that, that large. So maybe that may help as well.
I've, I'm trying to think, what due diligence is needed at this point from a city standpoint? I've, I've talked to Dr. Marlonado, and he, and his words to me, he thought that this was a very good idea, and he's moving forward to make sure that this works. I've talked to several board members. I don't know if you, you've said this. And they, and they seem to feel the same way. Now, if we put Exxon right there, if it's a good, if it works for us like it is, it's the same type of format for the city, then we've done our due diligence. Now, we can't, we can't dictate the operation, how Exxon is, is managed or HCC is managed. But as far as the city is concerned, it makes good sense. When you talk to Dr. Gaza, the demographics, the targeted demographics of HCC is in this area right here. Now, this came out of the mouths of the president of this area here. It makes good sense to move it over here. When you talk to the president of the whole, chancellor, the whole, I guess that's his title, he feels very strongly because the demographics, the targeted demographics are in this area right here. So I would like to see what I, what else is needed for Missouri City to do, what due diligence. We've brought together all entities. We've brought together the county, who said, let's go with this. We brought together Johnson Development, who seems to be ecstatic about, about this as well. And we are putting the numbers together, and it makes sense from a fiscal standpoint for Missouri City. And for an economic development standpoint, it certainly makes good sense. Now, we can't reject anything, but it sure looks good based on what we want over here.
That's your motion, huh?
Hmm?
That's your motion?
Yeah, it's my motion.
And let me add, thank you for your work on this project and all of the staff that have assisted you. I think it's fair to say that there are rising expectations for us. Citizens have displayed a desire for more transparency. We hear about more transparency all of the time, and we have all of these entities. In my opinion, this is an economic development project. Would you agree?
Economic development has many facets. Community development, it's a number of facets, yes. You can qualify it as a number of things.
And with that being said, in my opinion, serving on the Economic Development Committee, I have had questions and have wondered where the project stands. And as a council member, I can only imagine if I have questions on where the project stands. Constituents in the community may have questions, whether it's regarding the price, the details of the project, whatever the case may be. So who from our city speaks for council when these entities meet? Because I hear you, Mr. Smith, you, you said that you heard this person say this project is good. The project is in councilwoman for its district, but who on council is involved in the talks for the project? That's my question.
Before you came on council, what the mayor did was-
Get a second before we keep going. We got a motion.
Yeah, is that your second?
That's second.
Okay.
Before you came on council, the mayor appointed a liaison to, for HCC. What that did is that the, I think the charge was is to interact with ACC to try to determine how best the two can interact together for the benefit of the whole city. That automatically, I guess, put me in a position to talk to the, to those.
And I think it's, I think it's a great project. I mean, don't, don't get me wrong.
I'm not getting you wrong.
I, I think it's a great idea. I just, I mean, to be frank, would like to see more transparency.
Well, in, in equal, I would, you'll recall when this project started, there was a council committee that was not the Economic Development Committee that was approached first. committee that was not the Economic Development Committee that was approached first. We've been also in the Economic Development Committees briefed you at every opportunity. There has been every opportunity to ask questions, to provide that transparency. And to date, I have yet to receive a question on this project from you, sir. So it is difficult for me to respond and suggest that there's not transparency when in the committee meetings that we've provided.
When was our last committee meeting?
The last committee meeting on Economic Development was in November.
And this is February.
And we have had every opportunity to have conversations and I have not had any questions from any council member.
But it's February, right?
It is February, sir.
And our last meeting was in November?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And we have attempted to schedule a couple committee meetings and those were not able to be scheduled.
But that, let me just say, that HCC committee which Don chairs has still continued to meet.
That is correct.
And they've continued to meet with HCC. And it will continue to do so as long as he chairs that committee.
And our transparency is limited to HCC.
I'm sorry.
In other words, we can only tell what we know based on what HCC tells us.
That's correct. And.
Because it's their, it's their deal, not our deal. We are just participating. And.
Staff is always open to your questions, has always been open to your questions. We try to schedule the meetings to move things forward. We have briefing, briefings. We've had executive session discussions on this item. And if, if there is something that we're not providing you, our apologies. Please let us know how we can be more responsive to your needs.
Thank you.
Been in the paper?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. All right. Anyway, we need to move on and show our support for the project and hopefully that it answers Councilwoman Ford's questions and everybody's questions and be a positive thing that we all wake up one day and say it's the greatest thing we ever did. So I don't want it to sit down there in an empty building and that's where it's headed. Because they're not making the numbers that they need to make and they will move out and we won't have a campus at all. And that's my fear. We'll end up with a county facility and no college and all we're doing is paying taxes.
That's right. We'll still end up paying the taxes.
Still paying the taxes. So they've made, and they've got some barriers. They've got some bonding issues that they've got to jump through also, that they're concerned about. So I think it's a, I think we need to just move on. So there was a motion by Councilman Smith and a second by Councilman White. We'll vote. All those in favor? Motion carries. All opposed? All right, moving on. Let's see, we're at 11C.
A resolution, City Council, the city of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the purchase of 76 golf carts and the execution of a lease agreement and associated documents for the financing of such golf carts.
Move to that. Second.
Councilman White made a motion. Councilman Emery made the second. You missed it. We, we did that earlier in the LLC. So all those in favor?
I read it.
Motion carries. Item 11D.
A resolution, City Council, the city of Missouri City, Texas, approving the submission of the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Formula Grant Application to the Criminal Justice Division of the Office of the Governor through the Houston Galveston Area Council to fund the purchase of automated license plate recognition systems needed by the Police Department to prevent auto theft and other crimes associated with vehicles and containing other provisions related thereto.
This is a Bat Team request?
Move to that.
My second.
Councilman White made a motion. Councilman Smith made a second. Yes, sir. Let's talk about it.
Yeah.
Staff is requesting authorization to apply for HGAC grant to get automated license plate readers. It's, it's not just on the Bat Team. It can help all the patrol officers out there. Right now, the patrol officers have to manually enter license plates when they're driving around patrolling. This particular system will automatically run hundreds of plates. It's not only stolen cars. It can do like, we had Amber Alert that came out over the weekend. They can enter Amber Alerts, missing persons for silver alerts, anything attached to a vehicle, it can run in it. We just want to tap into that technology. Our sister city, Sugar Land, they have cars, but they also have them on the town center. So if a major incident occurs involving a vehicle, they can go back and search that data and get a lead. So we want to tap into that type of technology here in Missouri City.
So you're the HGAC guy. Are we going to get that money?
Well, it's our goal to get it.
Huh? Did you haul Chris down there with you last time?
No.
Two times.
I've gone with you before.
Yeah.
What do you think the chances are?
As good as anybody else's.
You put a good, you put a good word in, huh?
Yeah. We put two good words in for it.
Okay.
Let me ask, where, these are cameras that are going to be located?
There are mobile cameras that can be attached to the car magnetically. They can put them in marked cars, unmarked cars.
That's. So, and that's what we're looking at is in cars? We're not looking at in towers somewhere?
Not yet. This is just the starting, getting in and then we can expand out to.
Okay.
Like putting them in maybe some of the parks or some of the neighborhoods.
We, and we're certainly going to ask for, not only the cameras, but whatever the integration, the cost of integration will, will be too. Am I right, Floyd? You're going to ask for the whole thing?
That's right. Yeah. I'll be there tomorrow, so I'll bring the check home.
But as a patrol officer is pulling a car over, that's going to read that automatically for him so that it pops up on your screen?
It actually doesn't work that way.
Doesn't work that way?
It doesn't. It's actually, so if they're rolling around the city going through parking lots.
Oh, okay.
Or anything like that. The city that he mentioned has had, now has these at every entrance in your city.
Right. I know that.
So it's a technology that's been out there for a while. We just haven't tapped into it. It kind of goes inland with our intelligence-led policing initiatives that we already have. So we just don't have the technology. We frequently have to ask them to hopefully that the criminal element we're searching for entered from that side of the city, which usually they enter from the northern side of our city where Houston is. But yeah, it'd be nice to.
But they're putting up cameras too, are they not?
Not this type of cameras, although they have cameras in their downtown districts that are funded by their collection agencies through their municipal court is how their cameras are funded.
I got.
But again, these are going to be attached to our mobile units.
These are, yes, these are mobile. You've probably seen them on some adjacent cities' cars. Looks like a bunch of little box contraptions on the back. And even they have it on their citizens' assistance support team vehicles.
Really?
Chief, could you mention how many on this initial round that we were looking at?
This is a request for six.
Okay. All right. There was a motion and a second. You got it? All those in favor? Motion carries. Whoever, announcements? Are there any announcements? I know next Thursday, Fort Bend Mayor and Council meeting is in Meadows Place. For those that would like to attend, 6:30.
I, I did ask the city attorney to include a closed session item on all our agendas on the recruitment of a city manager so we can have an opportunity or something come up, we can, we can talk about it.
Yeah.
That does will begin March 2.
Okay. Anything else?
And the other thing is, is that we get a lot of, we get a lot of requests for, for records. And, and we're getting ready to start looking at budgets this year. And I hope we can be able to go back and track some of the expense and costs. And we ought to come up with a line item on our budget to track that cost. So, so we can be able to show, you know, just asking, just asking is not free. It, it costs something. And so at least when we do the budget, we can begin to account for that.
And I think, have we got a number for 2014?
The total number?
Of what we spent on open, on open records requests for the year 2014?
It, it depends on the request. You mean, the amount that we charge or staff?
No, what we have spent in 2014.
We can pull those numbers, we can get an estimate of how much.
I think that's a number that Budget Committee needs to look at. And I think we need to look at it. We need to tell the general public how much time is being spent. And I know we don't bill all the time for your time that you spend, but there's a lot better, a lot more beneficial things for us to be doing than trying to figure out frivolous requests.
Well, I, I think we want to be transparent, but we, you know, we like, you know, whoever's asking for those records, you know, we're, we're hoping that they understand that it, that there's a cost associated with that. And we're not trying to eliminate transparency. You know, I mean, that's the whole idea for the open.
And we do pay some cost, don't we?
Yeah.
I mean, if the cost is lengthy, then we do charge for that.
Right.
And we should.
If we receive a, a public information request where they ask for, you know, a lot of records.
Lot of work.
We usually submit a cost estimate letter and if it, the charges accumulate to, or exceed $100 and they have to give us a deposit.
And that's what I'm looking for because, I mean, simple request from a citizen wants to see something. I got nothing wrong with us, you know, doing that. But, you know, I think a lot of this stuff is very time consuming on your part and staff's part.
Yeah.
And legal's part.
And it reaches different departments. It's not just the city secretary, city secretary department.
I know.
It's all of the departments in the city.
Well, I didn't mean to create a discussion, but I'm sure the Budget Committee can take care. But we want to at least say to council, this is one of the things. And it's just another accountability. It's another transparency. We need to be transparent about the cost of what it costs to do this.
You want to talk about Black Heritage Month?
Yes. I want to talk about a couple of things. Black Heritage Month, last Saturday before last was a success. We, we had more people out right here in front of City Hall than, than we expected. And the, the people who put this thing together just took, took the rain and just moved forward with it. And we were really proud of it. Councilman White stepped up and he spearheaded the, the naming of Lexington Boulevard that's crossing 2234 is Thomas Taylor Parkway, I believe. Is that Thomas Taylor Parkway? And so we and Thomas Taylor's family had over 30, 39 or so came. It was nice to see that.
One from Virginia.
Yeah, yeah. Floyd was there as well. So, and Yolanda was there. We, we were really proud of it. It's our inaugural celebration and hopefully it will catch on and from now on, we'll have a Black History Month celebration in, in Missouri City until it gets to time where there's only one history, you know, and that's American history. But, but until that happens, we have to recognize those who've gone before us and those who've paid those, that price to make sure that we all feel comfortable as Americans. One of the things that I, the other thing I want to talk about, if you don't mind, Mayor, is I just left a HOA meeting who happens to meet the same time that we do and I don't get a chance to, to see them that often. And it, a couple of things kind of touched me a little bit, which caused me to say a couple of things. And I learned this a long time ago. When you in a position of leadership, you can handle that in, in one of three ways. And they're all kind of sophisticated definitions of leadership, but it, it actually boils down to three ways you could do it. One is, which is the most easiest way of doing it is you can sit on a perch and you can find just everything wrong. Just, it's wrong. And that doesn't really help the situation. And I learned a long time ago that when, when that comes before me, I can't hardly wait for someone to tell me after they say what's wrong is what the solution is. But so often I sell them here with the solution. And the other way is a utility method of handling, of managing when you're a leader. And that's when something goes wrong, you just fix it. We have a tendency to do that at home. You know, if the light is out, we replace the light. If the trash needs to be put out, we replace the trash. And the third way, the third way is the most important way. It's the most sophisticated way. And that is to have a vision, to understand your objective and what you really want to do. Understand how to put your plan together and how to make that plan work with cooperating with other folks. Now, sometimes it's not, it's a bumpy road, but keep sight of your objective. And that was important to me when I first came as a city councilman. That was important to me now. And I think we, this needs to be looked at a lot closer than what we're, what we're looking at it now. And I'm not placing any blame on anybody. I'm just, this is kind of a self-evaluation type of thing.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I wanted to mention also, Don attended St. John's Missionary Baptist Church along with State Representative Ronald Reynolds, Congressman Al Green, and Congressman Pete Olson. And this is, this is church by all definition. It's the only historical church we have in Missouri City. Founded back in 1869. And so we all are working to help try to preserve that, that church and that property. And we're also working with the Fort Bend Historical Commission. The city has been very, staff has been very responsive in working with them. And, and the church will probably be coming forth with an application as in not-for-profit because we do have a process by which to work with not-for, not-for-profits. But it's making progress. Lawrence Turner, our chairman of our Parks Board, who's also a civil engineer, has volunteered his, so he is their engineer. So that way, when they're working with the city, they're working with somebody who knows how to work with development services and, and our engineering services.
And you got a young man that did some architectural planning?
The young man that, yeah, that did the architect work for a historical architect firm. He's in New York right now. Well, he moved to New York and working with, with them. So they got an architect, they got plans, they got the Historical Commission. So things are beginning to fall in line. And then they will firm up better, a budget that particularly with the engineering in it, it's kind of difficult to do a budget without the engineering in it. And then we can start going to ask people to give money.
That's great. Yeah, it's been there a long time. Burned and they've still been meeting in it, you know, need some help. Yeah, as important as a freedom tree. Very good. Anything else? All right. Thank you all. We don't have executive session.
We do not.